All right, it is 5:30, the regular city council meeting of October 5th, 2020. Before we get started, if everyone could join me in saluting the flag, I'm sorry, VFW went a different route. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, thank you. According to Minnesota statute 13D dot 021, it allows meetings to be conducted over the phone or other electronic means under the following conditions. The mayor has determined an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted under section 13D dot 02 is not practical due to a health pandemic. The mayor and all councilors participating in the meeting can hear one another and they all can hear the discussion. Attendance by the public is not feasible due to a health pandemic. At least one member of the council is physically present at their regular meeting unless unfeasible due to the health pandemic. And all votes are conducted by roll call so that each member can be identified and recorded. We do have Councilor Kraus who will be voting first this evening. He is online. He can hear us and we can hear him. So we will move on to approve the agenda. Tonight, we have one addition to the agenda, which is a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Woodworkers Lodge, W.33IAMAW, Union for the Firefighter Engineer Work Schedule effective December 31st, 2020. I would, the Chair would call, or Chair would ask for the approval of the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from our September 21st regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussions, questions, concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the minutes of the September 28th special city council meeting for the levy adoption. Chair would entertain a motion for those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the payments of claims and approval for payment of accounts payable. We have a transfer to the 101 general fund from the 812 lodging tax fund in the amount of $349.55. Then we have accounts payable claims, the regular city of International Falls claims of $2,504,224. Airport commission claims of $43,053.57. Airport commission cash flow claims of 120, I'm sorry, $132,521.4. Runway reconstruction phase two of $3,179,028.75. And runway project phase three claims of $242,506.98. For a total of $6,101,310.58. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Questions, concerns? I guess I would have one question for the city administrator on this one. With the $3 million for the phase two claims and us trying to get half of, half the money coming in from the county, do we, is that being covered? Are they still giving us their share of the monies coming in?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you. With that question being answered, Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on something that is not on the agenda? All right. Also, if, if there is someone online that wants to address the city council on an issue, please comment in the chat group and just let us know that you do want to address us. And there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Next, we have a public hearing. We are looking to receive public input and comment regarding the use of body worn cameras policy for the city of International Falls Police Department. Chief, do you want to just give us a little background of where we're at and how we've got to this?
Sure. This is on?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As, as you know, we've been researching, putting together body worn camera program for the police department. As the times have changed, it's become, to my attention, it's more, it seems like it's time to probably do that before it actually becomes mandatory. But I think in the best interest of the officers, the citizens, and the city, now is the time to do that. In this process, I've, as you know, I've been speaking with several different vendors, looking for the right, the right cameras, the right data storage capabilities and whatnot. And so I'm still going through that. Part of the process of putting together body worn camera program in accordance with Minnesota state statute is we have to put in place a policy regarding the use of these cameras and the data that they record. So I, as many other departments, I've gone to the League of Minnesota Cities and I've took their, their model policy and proposing that we adopt that. No sense in recreating the wheel here. And I've found that other chiefs have done the same thing. During this process, also in accordance with the statute, we need to allow for public comment, public input on the policy before it goes into place, both electronically and at a public meeting. So that's why we're here.
Okay. And did you take any, any public comment electronically?
I have not.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have anything to bring forward during the public hearing for the use of body worn cameras policy for the police department? Council, any comments?
I think we're positive things to move forward with it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I guess I'm just wondering if this is something that we shouldn't try and hold a standalone meeting on, just to get more comment. I am totally for this. I would say that the lion's share of the public that I've talked to is for this. I actually haven't heard a negative comment. I just wonder if, given the pandemic and the state of the meetings and the way everything's going, if it wouldn't behoove us to have a formal meeting unless this takes the place of that. I don't really know, it's just my opinion on the matter.
I guess I would, I would respectfully disagree, Councilor Kraus. And the reason for it is we did put out that we were having this discussion this evening. And I also shared this information on my, my mayor Facebook page. The only information that came in is we should have done it sooner. So I think that this is a pregnant, I, if, if we were hearing some negative information, but I haven't heard anything, the chief hasn't heard anything. In fact, I've heard quite the contrary, that, that we should move forward with this. And this is being done now so that we can get it in place with our 2021 budget. And it's for both the safety of the residents, the police, and the general public of our community. So I understand where you're at, but if we were getting more negatives, I think we should have that conversation in an open, in a, this is an open meeting. In a, in a separate meeting, but given the, the set of circumstances that no public comment has come in, both electronically or here today, I would say we should move forward with it. And we always have the option of modifying it in the future if we have to.
You know what, I can, I can live with that, so I will rescind my previous comment. I'm, I'm okay with that. It, it makes sense. And yeah, like, like I had said before, I haven't received a negative comment, so I don't want to, you know, make you think that that's where I'm at on this. It's just a, it's a hot button issue at this time nationwide.
Yep. So at this, this time, I guess I would ask the council, please.
I have a question.
Oh, please, come forward, come forward, yep, so that they can hear it online. Yep, yep, just state your name and...
Oh, John Van Ar. I was wondering, do they use dash cams now in the police cars?
No.
I think, no?
We have them recording.
No, not at all. Had they considered that ever?
A badge, I'm sorry.
A dash cam?
No dash cam. So, we did have dash cams years ago. Chief Bradford put them in the squad cars. And it was back when they recorded VHS tapes in the trunk and whatnot, so it became obsolete. We transitioned over to digital recording devices as well. And then, for whatever reason, I think we were displacing some of the quality, some product was coming out of that. And determined, I want to speak for Chief Bradford, by the way, that he determined that it probably just wasn't worth the cost going forward to keep replacing those units. Now technology's so, you know, it's so much better now than these little cameras the officers would wear. A very good picture, good audio, and the data, they go in to store the data, it's so much more advanced now than it was before. But to answer your question, we did have them years ago.
I just didn't know if it'd be worthwhile with the new technology, trying that again.
Okay, good point.
And, yeah. And then I didn't know how many, how many incidents were there on the dash cams when they had them, did they?
I thought you wouldn't know that, probably.
Well, I ran them, and so when I was on patrol, we had them. So the dash cams would activate whenever we turned on our overhead lights, so it would capture all your traffic stops, anything like that. So primarily, the data that those captured were traffic related because they're in the car, right? Whereas body cameras would actually be able to, you know, with the officers at all times, so it would capture much more data, and it's going to be much wider.
Thank you. Great question. City Attorney, do you have a point you'd like to make on these?
I do, Mr. Mayor, Council. I would agree with the chief that this is something that most departments are moving towards. And I think probably the sooner we do it, the better. And it certainly would be helpful in certain situations from a prosecution standpoint where there's disagreements between what the officer said occurred and what the witnesses or the defendant said occurred. So I would be supportive of the request.
I guess I have a follow-up question for you, City Attorney, on, on the data practices that we have. How, how is that going to be affected by having the dash cam, or, I'm sorry, not dash, body cams? How, how will we be able to utilize this for the correct purposes and make sure that the information doesn't get out, or just for both the safety of everybody involved?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, from the standpoint of the Data Practices Act. From the standpoint, in our criminal prosecutions, there's a discovery process, so we would be required to turn over all video captured to the defendant and their attorney. But I, I don't know specifically if there would be third parties seeking information under data practices. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I, yep.
So, part of this, part of the data storage process that we'll have, when the officer docks their cam at the end of their shift, all that data will download into a secure storage cloud, if you will. And so you will then go online and will tag those, every instance that's captured will be tagged as evidentiary or a traffic stop or a criminal investigation, things of that nature. And that'll flag how long it stays in that system. Now, for anybody to want to see the data, to see the dash, the body camera, they'd have to put in a data request. Okay, then we would have to review that to make sure that, number one, they were entitled to that data, if that data was protected. So it's going to be a case-by-case basis. So it's really, it's a new undertaking for us, and we'll have to see what kind of requests that we actually get from the citizens and see if it's manageable or not, so. But to answer your question, someone will have to specifically request to get the data.
Okay.
It's not something that they can just readily go get and put out in the public.
And then whoever accesses that, that cloud, that storage device, it'll be name stamped of who's been in there, so we'll know who's...
Complete chain of evidence on everything.
Okay, fantastic. That, that's, that's the concerns that I needed to have cleaned up, so thank you. If nobody, oh, please.
Mayor, it's, I would just add that in addition to the Data Practices statute and ordinance that we have, the policy references the general records retention schedule for Minnesota cities, which we've adopted to try and maintain all of our records. And so both of those policies are referenced in this particular body cam policy. And because the records retention schedule was so voluminous, I didn't include it, but we did include a link on the website, so anybody can look at the Data Practices ordinance, and they can also look at the records retention schedule to gain more information about what, what needs to be retained and for how long.
And I think my concern with the data practices was only that it's dated 1980 in our books, and I don't know if we were so much concerned in 1980 about body cams. So I just want to make sure that what we have on file is sufficient to be able to keep, hold, and prosecute with, you know, just to keep all of our information secured. So that was my concern. All right, if there's no other discussion on this, the Chair would be open to a deny or authorize to the use of body worn camera policy.
I'll make the motion to use body camera.
We have a motion to authorize body, the use of body worn camera policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion from Councilor Deech and a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everybody. Next, we have opening bids. This is a quote of $7,900 from On2 Solutions to purchase Fine Light LED Struck Fixtures and Upgrade Lighting in the council chambers for remote virtual meetings. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that quote.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. City Administrator, and how are we going to fund this?
Well, Mayor, this is a, related to the project that we're upgrading the council chambers so that we can do remote meetings more easily than we can with the screen, the array of wires and everything out here in the, in the council chambers. So the lighting is part of that, it'll be funded with CARES funds, and we'll be raising this light bank that we have in here now. They'll basically be in the same location, only higher. There'll be LED lighting, there'll be indirect lighting up as well as direct lighting down, and they can be dimmable. And so we see this as advantageous to make it easier for the public that are observing our meetings via Zoom or other means, that they can, they can see it. They won't have glare on their TVs or what's going on, but it'll be, it'll just be a better environment entirely for, for remote meetings.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the second and final reading of ordinance number 39 of the fifth series. This ordinance repeals section 830 and enacting revised section 830 to the Code of Ordinance for regulating recreational and special vehicles. Chair would entertain a motion for the second reading of that ordinance.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler, and we have a second by Councilor Kraus. City Administrator, does this have to get posted before it, printed before it becomes...
Effective?
Effective.
Yes, all ordinances do require that, so it has to be published.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
First off, I'd like to commend Administrator Anderson and the staff for getting this done. You know, this has been a pet project of mine since I first stepped onto this board back in September of 2018. And secondly, I want it to be noted on the record that it's very important that although we are repealing a, an existing ordinance, the truth of the matter is, all we're really doing is adding language to that ordinance. The original ordinance, I've received several phone calls, and I had to explain that the original ordinance, all it really did, as far as ATVs were concerned, was identify what an ATV was. But it didn't say what you could and couldn't do. It didn't, all it did is give a definition. And I'm really proud of this, that it, it updates the law to be more than a definition. It actually says what you, what you can and can't do. So I just wanted that to be on the, on the record. And I would also hope that at some point in the future, maybe a, an informational thing could be put together to kind of explain the laws a little more in depth. I think there's a lot of people that have called that are worried that it's going to allow young children to ride the four-wheelers all over the city, and nothing could be further from the, from the case. So I just wanted to point that out.
And, good points, Councilor Kraus. And I guess I would like to add to that, too. There was some concern that after we had the first reading on this, that this meant that they didn't have to abide by the street and road rules. All of the, the regular rules and for speed, age requirements, everything else is still in effect as if, as if you're driving a regular car. This just allows legal drivers to be able to utilize these equipment, or this equipment on the city roads. So, yeah, I think that info that you just pointed out would make a lot of sense. That's something we can work on through the winter and have that available in the spring when people get out there with their ATVs and such. So I think that's a good point. City Administrator.
Mayor, I do want to point out that in this ordinance, and it's one of the things that's required by state law, but we do require a permit for people. And, and the permit would be good for a three-year period for certain vehicles like motorized golf carts, for instance. So the ordinance as it's drafted right now says that there, it references an ordinance establishing fees and charges, and we don't have that ordinance in place. So we're going to create a system where people will submit an application, and we will issue permits without a fee until such time as we go through a, a new ordinance adoption process to set a fee for this. My goal would be is to consolidate all the fees that the city has scattered throughout our Code of Ordinances and put it into one ordinance so that we can just hand it, say, these are the fees for XYZ, everything that the city has. And, and then, as you pointed out, that would be something we would work towards over the course of this fall and early next winter.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, can I be sure to emphasize that the state is requiring this fee? This isn't something that we're enacting on our own. I know Administrator Anderson said that, but I really want to stress that we are not creating fees. We are simply enacting fees that are required to allow people to utilize a golf cart on the city streets. That's the state's law, not ours.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the second and final reading of ordinance number 40 of the fifth series, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, section 2-8, salary of the mayor and council adding a per diem, per meeting pay. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'm sorry. Say, just a question, is this something that's automatic, or is this something that the council and mayor would have to voucher for?
And that is exactly where I was going to go with my conversation on this, too. This is, this is not a guarantee. The, the only guarantee that you have as a, as a mayor or council is the mayor gets $350 a month with no benefits, and the city councilors get $300 a month with no benefits. So this is a per diem that the city council members would have to request, it would have to go to the council and be approved. It would be $45 per meeting, $75 for a half-day meeting, or $150 for a full-day meeting. The, the council members would have to put in to receive this, this amount. This will not be automatically generated on their paychecks. And the reason for this, number one, is because we have people that have to leave work to come to meetings. Historically, your city council, your county commissioner, and a lot of your elected positions are older people that are retired. We're trying to get younger people to be involved in our municipal government, and in the event that they have to give up a half-day of work to come in to do meetings, and they cannot get reimbursed for that time through their work, this is an opportunity for them to be able to submit a, a bill to the city. And it, it is to try to keep these positions for everybody to be able to serve their community. Now, we, as a council, had allotted an additional $18,000 into our budget for 2021. That would be essentially doubling the pay of the city council, roughly. But again, we don't know who's going to use it, who's going to put in for it. We have other fees that you can go and, per diems that you can use when you go out of town. And our past city councillor, Chelsea Nelson, went to a handful of meetings out of town, and she never put in any per diem or mileage. So it doesn't mean that all of us are going to be reaping the benefits of this, but it is there for those that need it to be able to make meetings. So I want to make that very clear. This is not a guaranteed pay raise. This is just an opportunity, if you want it, because you have to miss work or whatever, this gives you a, an option to do that, so. Any other discussion?
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I just, yeah, I wanted to make sure because, believe it or not, I don't see myself using this. I'm not in it for that, to be honest with you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have an informational piece for COVID-19 testing based off of a citizen's request at our last meeting. City Administrator.
Just briefly, Mayor, we had Mr. Grover here that addressed the city council at the last meeting, and he was asking about the potential to have our CARES Act funds that were allocated to the city used for testing. And so I provided for your information, as well as the public, some of the information that I found on the Minnesota Department of Health website. You can see that I've highlighted certain texts that I think was important. Says the CARES Act requires that COVID-19 testing is covered without cost sharing. This applies to all health insurance coverage in Minnesota, and, and it applies to the test only, but office visits might have other costs not covered by the CARES Act, so. And it does encourage people to check with their healthcare provider or health insurance company to find out what's covered and under what network. So I just wanted to draw the council's attention to that. And you can see that both Rainy Lake Medical Center and the Essentia Health Clinic in International Falls, both will accept and schedule appointments for COVID-19 testing, so. And again, Mr. Grover was present, indicating that his healthcare... present, indicating that his healthcare insurance company would not cover those costs, and it is required under the CARES Act.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next we go to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. One is to approve the 2021 Northeast Service Cooperative, BCBS, Health Insurance and Renewal and Authorized Signatures. And the second one is to approve the 2021 Group BCBS, Medicare Gold, Senior Gold Health Insurance Renewal and Authorized Signatures. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Sooner.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Briggs. Call the question.
Aye.
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 Councilor Kraus?
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Sorry, I was muted.
Next, we have, uh, under new business, Bob Dosenza requests to discuss calendar parking on Fifth Street and rental property fees. Mr. Dosenza? Yeah, definitely. Just take the microphone. We actually have another microphone holder there.
I'll use that mic right there. Do you guys mind if I take this?
No, you're fine. Nope. That's not a problem.
Well, I guess first, council, I think I'd like to introduce myself. I recognize a lot of you guys from our community. Some of yous I know, Brian, Harley, I've talked to you before. Um, the rest of you, I've definitely seen around. Um, in case you don't know me, my name is Bob Dosenza. Um, I want to get something straight with you guys right now, right off the bat. I am not a slumlord in this community. Um, I chose to invest here. I own BD Rentals. That is my only employment. Um, at this point in time, I own 67 units. I'm actually the largest private landlord in our community, although Hausman's does have more than me. There's two of them. Um, little bit of background, I'm a father of two. Um, some of yous might have known my daughter, Janai, who grew up here, and, um, she's, uh, married and God wished she would come back. I don't know. I got a great son who is four. Um, God was good to me. I spread him out, twenty-seven and four. Um, I'm originally from Boston. I lived the first 10 years of my life in Boston. And then, thank goodness that God had a hand on my family and brought me to Minnesota. And since then, this has been my home. I've got a lot of family now in Minnesota, North Dakota, and Boston. Um, Boston's a great place to go visit if you guys never been there. I love coming back to our community when I go. I can honestly say that. Um, I graduated from Falls High in 1985. I am a proud Bronco. And I went, I've pretty much been a resident of this community. I left for five years when I went to Bemidji State. I got a management, a degree in business management from there. And a little bit of history, when I was graduating, I chose to come here. Um, I did have two job offers. One was from a Racks company. I don't know if you guys ever heard that. It's a restaurant. They actually specialized in roast beef. They did roasted chicken and some other things. And I still remember it. The pay was $22,000. They started, they said the bonuses were a lot, but I highly doubt it. Um, it was down in, it was either Burnsville or Bloomington, and I forget which one it was. I actually went for an interview. I got offered the job. I would have been on that place for six months. At that point, the guy who was training me would have went to a new store that they were opening, and I would have ran that one. And I do have some familiarity in the restaurant business, because I worked, it is Hardee's, but I'll tell you what, it's a restaurant, and Dave knows how to run a business. And, um, I worked there for quite a few years. My second job was Trade Home Shoes. I always joked with my roommate, because he actually was working there, and we joked, oh, geez, we're going to be Al Bundy's. That job started eighteen thousand a year. Um, again, they rarely talked up bonuses, but then, like I said, a roommate of mine was already there. He graduated the year before that. It was in Iowa. And told me right out, they ain't much, Bob. Of course, now in 1990, I chose to come up here to the Falls. And I worked for the expansion for the summer. And throughout that, I put in an application at the mill. And go alone, hold first, I, I decided not to go back to school for a quarter. Back then, we were in semesters. You had fall, winter, and spring. And I needed two more semesters to graduate. And I chose to stay here for that fall semester and work. The project was winding down to make money. Well, at that point in time, I put my application in. And go figure, they called me. Shortly before, well, it was about two months before I was graduating, and they wanted to hire me in January. And, um, Boise was great. I explained my situation, that I've got thirty-plus thousand dollars in student loans and I want this degree. And they backed me. They told me, you go get your degree. When you're done, which they knew the date, we'll hire you, which they did. Then, I lost a lot of seniority doing that, um, because I went from January to September, and it was just a huge hiring frenzy there in 91. But I will tell you that I chose to come back here and be part of this community. Um, I worked in Boise for nineteen and a half years. And throughout that time, I built my rental business. Um, I'm not going to say Boise wasn't a good job. It is the best money I've ever made for the work that I had to do in there. I appreciate they gave me a living, to be honest. A lot of people don't feel that way. And I truly felt that way in there, that I've worked so much harder for so much less money that I didn't understand some things. But in that time, I built my business. I built, at the time I left the mill, which was in nineteen, it was in 2011, I had 22 rental units. Within three years of getting out of the mill, now I had time to sit down and do some things. I built it to 67. Um, I don't know how I did it, friends either. Throughout doing that, that full-time job in the mill, and believe me, being a landlord is not even close to the hardest job I have ever had in my life. And it's really not even close. But through building that up, I coached my daughter for three years in Little League, two years in summer ball. I literally never missed nothing. And now that I'm self-employed, I work well over 60-plus hours a week. And that is a understatement, to be honest with you, when I add them up. Obviously, now, a little background, I'm here for a few things. I just would like to start, a couple of things that I'm going to address. You guys are probably going to think, why didn't you come here before? There's a reason I didn't come. As a lot of this stuff was going on, like the parking issues and the changing of the water, because that's one thing I want to talk about, were those water bills, and now cannot go in my renters' names. Horrible for us landlords. I was going through issues. As I said, I got a four-year-old son. And there were things wrong when he was born. And we didn't know what for the first about year and a half. Literally, on all these meetings, I was out of town. I, I can't remember if it was Duluth, Bemidji, or the cities. But we were literally traveling weekly until they finally diagnosed him with several things. One thing, autism, and another thing called GAND, which only 150 people in the world have. And, um, if it wasn't for this virus, he already would have had a trip to California, maybe me, too, because they do want to study him. Everybody that has GAND has autism. We really don't know if it's a good or bad thing yet. But I couldn't make it to the meetings. But I did take the time to come up here and to talk to our mayor, not you, Harley. Um, and told him, because I think I had some really good ideas to help with some of these situations. And to be honest, I feel they fell on deaf ears. I don't know if you guys heard them. You're going to know in a minute if you heard them at your meetings, because I wasn't here. Um, the first thing I'd like to talk is parking in front of my office. Do you guys know where my office is?
Mm-hmm.
519 Fourth Avenue. When I bought that, and forever, it's commercially zoned, it had four-hour parking in front of it. I really didn't even know. I got the plans on this, but I did not know they were changing in front of my office to calendar parking, because it's a nightmare for me. Now what happens, because I'm on the edge of a residential neighborhood, the people up the block, and I'm glad you guys started enforcing this parking thing on each side, because I literally couldn't get up Seventh Street with my trailer when they go like this, and I'd sit and think, ain't no way in amazin' it's getting up here. Yeah, you have to go around. You know, not only do they park on the opposite side, they park right across from each other. But, um, at my office, what happens is, it is calendar parking. So people park in front of their thing, and I think, I'm not sure, but I think one day the city will plow one side, the next day do the other side, right? Well, they weren't enforcing this, so people didn't move. So they would literally get plowed in. So right in front of my apartment, you've got a huge bank. I don't keep my office like that. Matter of fact, what they started doing is, because I clear my office, now that they, it's not four-hour parking, they park all night in front of my office and leave the cars there all day long. Here's a couple pictures. One picture, you'll see what they did during the snow, and you'll see where, all the way up. Um, I'll, I'll pass these. You guys can take them if you feel comfortable touching them. I'll just put them right here, otherwise. Here's one sitting in front of my office. You can see how clean in front of my office is. Um, I'm just asking that you put back the four-hour parking for me, so that I can pull up and anybody else that comes to my office, and I'm busy there, um, can pull in front of my office and walk into my office, like most businesses that are commercially zoned. I'm not sure why they changed that there. I do understand why some other, not totally, because I'm going to get at some things next, and some of it does concern parking. So I do ask the council that you would consider putting my four-hour sign back in front of my office. They can have their calendar up, but right in front of my office really needs to be four-hour parking. Um, and I would like you guys to please consider it. The second issue was the parking in front of, on Fifth Street, right across Whorley Motors. You know, when this thing was made, and I did bring some things up to the, to the, to our mayor, because I just wasn't sure if he knew what was happening. Are you guys aware that there's 18 people and families that live right there?
Yes.
Eighteen of them, 12 in my building and six in Sivon's. That is the widest street we got here. And it sits empty all night long, 90% of the time. And I'm guessing it's because of snowplow that that was done. Nick Sivon, and just to let you know, that owns the building right next to me, he has no parking. Long before, and I've owned that, my building, for about 25 years, and long before I owned that, the people who owned it and the people in his building, because he's got no parking, came up with an agreement that you pay for the garbage. Now he actually plows, too, and you can use the lot. They got nowhere to park. And our city's recommendation for them was to go across the alley on the other side and park in that parking lot. I challenge you guys to do it. I challenge you to go in the winter and do it. I should have took pictures. No one shovels it. They got kids, none in my unit. All mine, at this point, there has been, are all single people. Not the case of Nick's. He's got several families in there. They have no, they watch the streets and open all night long. They can't park there. My lot is full sometimes where they have to go over to that overflow and walk, carrying kids, carrying groceries. I mean, it's an issue. And I didn't know that you were aware that there's 18 people that live there. Because I will tell you, I'm guessing it's for plowing. And I'm sure that that makes plowing easier for our city. As a council, please keep in mind that you work for the city. You guys work for the city, for the people here. And I don't think we should be making things easier as we're making things very hard on our citizens, some of them old, that got to walk that distance now, because they can't go right, and it's empty. When you guys leave here, drive by there. There's only a few times that you really need them. And you know what I say? Move your car when it snows, or we're towing it, like other cities do. Don't take it out on all those people. Now, I'll tell you, when you guys first did that, my phone was ringing off the hook. And as I told all those people, I didn't change that. What do you want me to do? But I did let them know what they could do. Now, I've been to the, these city meetings a few times, and I'm going to let you guys know something, a couple different groups of people. Every time I came, they listened. I'll tell you that. They listened. So I'm giving you guys a chance today. Um, there are people over there, and I'm going to tell you about those people. They don't like to come to this meeting. I don't feel really, as you can tell, I'm comfortable coming up here and I'm comfortable talking with you guys. That ain't the case with a lot of your citizens. I'm telling you that now. I've told them to come up here. I said, you guys need to go to that meeting. I think they'll change it back. Why do I say that? Because if a bunch of them came up here and told you what they're going through, I've heard, just listen. They don't want to do it. They don't want to come up here. So as I'm coming up here for other things, I thought I'd advocate for my renters today, that I, I don't think, and I will tell you, I've let them know. There, I got 12 people in my building, actually more. There's, there's a couple, there, there's couples in there. Nick's got a bunch more. Talking about 25, 30 people, and they got a lot of friends. So you can sway the, you can sway our whole council if you guys all got together and said, go vote. Do they realize, they don't realize that. Not that they want to do it. Not that I think our council's doing a horrible job. I think you need to take our citizens into account when you're making some of these decisions. I think that was done to make things easier on employees and harder on our citizens. I think it should be the opposite way around. As taxpayers, we all pay wages for our city people. So again, I'm asking you guys to change that back. I think there should be some rules. I think that when it snows and they know that there's inches of snow out there, that you better go move. Because if you don't, we're going to tow you. That's what I do. When they don't move their lot, matter of fact, that's part of the reason Nick plow, plow that now. I tow. I didn't have problems for my renters. I got all their phone numbers and they knew. I had lots of problems from Nick's. And I don't like to tow, but I did, because I need to clear that lot. We got eight inches of snow out there. I literally have cars stuck and people trying to walk in there. And, um, they don't move. I think the city should take the same approach. At least there. There's so many people that, that's their home, and they truly have to walk. It is an inconvenience for them. And, and I, I don't know if they'd like it. I don't think they'd mind if you walked and talked to them. There's good people in my building. I'm not sure about Nick's. I am. There's good ones in his. I know a few of them, too. Um, I ask you guys to at least consider changing that back, you know, with rules, that we need to plow, we need to keep our city. And let me tell you about our city. I think they do a fantastic job to you guys. I do. I think our city does a good job of keeping our roads cleared, of keeping things done. I've been to other cities. I can tell you right now, I went to Bemidji and it was horrible down there. It's like, I'm glad to be back here. Ours was much better, to be totally honest with you. I think they do a good job. But we can't lose track of who they work for, and that is the citizens. Um, with that, I'd like, like to talk a little bit about that water changing, changing that's been done. Um, I don't know if you guys realize the burden that that put on us, um, that to now that we have to bill every single person for their water. And not only that, how do I do it? As I told other landlords, we really need to call that water department and flood them. That every time somebody moves in, most of the people move in on the first, but all throughout the month. My bills are done on the 20th. How do I know what to charge them? Do I just charge them for the 10 days that I, that I was there? Did I send my cleaning person in there? And did they use some water? And how much water did they use? I can't charge those people for that. And to be honest, I've really never heard of that. It's, it's not that the city's losing. If they don't pay their water bill, it goes on my taxes. So when this first came out, and I'm looking in the paper and I can't get to this meeting, my first thing is to reach out. Call Kelly Myers. Kelly, why is this happening? He gave me a reason, and I'm going to tell you guys right now, I understood your pain. He said, Bob, 90% of our turn-ons and offs come from rental homes. It's not such a big deal in summertime, but when they do it in the winter, which as you guys know, people think that these cold weather rules, people can't turn in, the gas company can shut you off in the middle of the winter if they had an agreement with you in place by the October 20th, and you went against that rule and didn't pay them. If they didn't have an agreement, they can't. Gas companies smart, their agreements are in place before that date. They can shut you in the middle of the winter. So what I thought, what Kelly told me is, what happens in the winter is, we get a shut-off. So now we got to go over there and shut off, or the first thing we got to do is send over the front-end loader. There's a snowbank there. You guys know they're in the ground. Then you got to send them over there with the eh, 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 to find it. Then when they find it, they got to send the steamer over there, because it's frozen, it's the middle of the winter. Then they got to hope they can steam it out and not have issues. I guess there's been some issues where it ain't easy to get it out. I feel their pain. So I came up with an idea, and I came here and talked to Bob. And I said, you want to know what? With the gas company and the electric company, they give us an option to do what's called a revert agreement. And I guarantee you, almost every landlord in town does it, because it happened to me once, where they shut the gas off in my unit, and it froze my whole unit, flooded the whole, whole unit, busted my boiler, my heat exchanger, pipes, $6,000-plus dollars is what that costed me. At that point, that was 15 years ago, I got a revert agreement on every property. I suggested that the city require landlords to put a revert agreement. Because here's what happens, you go and shut my water off, and I don't know that you did that. These women in the water department are great, too. I really like those women, too. I'm honestly going to tell you, I miss Paula Karzniya, because I was friends with her sons. I was friends with her. She would literally call me, Bob, we're about to turn your water off. Don't turn it off, put it in my name. If you shut our water in the winter, the same thing's going to happen. If water don't move, it's going to freeze and bust our pipes. I think the shit, city should have took that. And then, after the, it was enacted, the second reason that I heard really, really troubled me. And it was at the water department paying my bills. Because I was there and I was paying my bill, and I was venting, that this really is a nightmare for us. And it was said to me that the reason that, that it's not fair, that our city would use taxpayer dollars to bill for landlords. I didn't say nothing, because I didn't want to argue, but let me tell you something right now. You guys don't think I'm a taxpayer? I figured out what I pay in taxes each year. I pay, I got to write half of it this week, $21,436 I pay in taxes. I don't pay taxes? I'm like, you've got to be kidding me. Should it matter if mine is homesteaded or not? Because let me tell you, by not Because let me tell you, by not being homesteaded, I pay more. My water bills? My water bills for 2019 totaled $28,229.91, to let you know that's more than my gas bills. That alone, I question, but I'm not here to talk about that. Without landlords, I can tell you right now, had me, Hausmans, Glennies, a lot of them, not took over some of these properties, you want to know what you'd be getting for taxes and water bills? It really troubled me when that was said to me. I am a taxpayer, and I think you guys should work for business people too, and you do work for business people. Another thing that really, really got me is just the way some things are done, I will say, because after that was said to me, when things are said like that, it makes people think. I got a mom that worked for the city of Eagan for 27 years, my sister and brother-in-law work for the city of Apple Valley right now, Jeff's been there over 30, Lisa for about 26. When my mom left, because I talked to her, which was, she's 75, so it was a while ago, the last year she was there, their city went to a flex schedule, meaning that their city could work, and my mom actually got one Friday off a month, where she didn't have to go into work at all. Those office hours never changed a bit. People could go to that office and call that office at any of those office hours, and that did not affect them at all. To this day, it's the same way in Apple Valley, but it's not in our city. You want to know what we did in our city? We gave them time off too, and told them that they don't have to come in on Friday. And the citizens of our community can't do business on that too. Do you know where we work? Do you know what the schedule is at the mill? Because I'm going to tell you, because I worked in there for 19 and a half years. Your long stretches where you work six to seven, 12-hour days, start Friday, Saturday, Monday, you work days, you get Monday off, you work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights, who's going to get up and come here by noon to take any care of business that they got to in there? Not me. I'm going to sleep because I'm tired. Now, when the weekend gets over, their next shift starts, it's four day shifts in a row, four 12s in a row, then they get Friday off, and they have to get up here by noon, or they can't do their business. You guys are here to serve. I'm not against them getting the time off, at all. Not at our expense. Not when I gotta sit and listen to that I don't pay taxes. And the other point that I really got to bring up is when they said that to me, I thought, okay, you made their job easier. How much money does taxpayers save by making that job easier? None. Zero. Nobody lost their job, nobody did nothing, you made it harder on our citizens to be able to get up here and take care of business. I'm being told that they don't, I don't know, they don't want to do my work, because I am not, I am a taxpayer, they're using my money, they were incorrect by telling me that. I think we need to look at it. I think our city needs to look, as I said, at who you serve. You know, we're changing things for plowers, we're changing things for city employees, it's got to be about our citizens first, we're paying things. And, and I don't want to sound hard, but I am upset, and I'm more upset about what I'm about to talk about next, because I worked so hard to do it, and I'm going to tell you guys right now, that in my estimation, I find it appalling and actually an insult that somebody would sit and figure out how they can spend my money, because that's what happened, that's what the paper said, we're going to take $67,000 from landlords. It's like, are you kidding me? Are you guys aware what's going on in this community? I mean, I read it in the paper, and I'm very disappointed because this all happened so quick, I didn't even know what was happening until last Wednesday. I called our city administrator, because I just was, I couldn't get it off my mind on Friday that I gotta come here. I wish housing could be here, Kathy from HUD, I talked to her extensively, because she's on our side, because she knows what we're going through. She couldn't make it, she had plans. We have a housing crisis in this community, are you guys aware of that?
Absolutely.
Did you guys see it in the paper? I want to tell you a little bit, because I'm an investor, and I'm an investor here. There ain't nobody that's going to come to this community and buy a home. And I, and I, what I really, and I suggest, you know, maybe you guys ought to buy homes because you think we got a lot of money, and there's money to give, to give, I suggest you do it. Nobody's going to do that in our community. There's a reason why we have absolutely no high-end housing here. If it wasn't, do you realize, anybody that owns a home, if you guys can, if I'm wrong, I'd like to know, but I talked to Kelly too, I don't think there's a person in the, that owns a home in this community for a rental, that chose to do that, that's not from here like me, like Wixtrums and Glennies and Lepre, and we're all from here, we all were raised here, we chose to come back here, we chose to invest our money here. If we didn't do that, there'd be no homes, and I'm going to give you an example why, I kind of wrote one down here, of this 922 Eighth Street that I own. My payment on that is $225. You guys keep in mind something here, we can't get rents that they get down in Bemidji and Virginia, we can't get them here. For my one bedrooms, I get 400 to 450, for a two bedroom, 500 to 550, and a three bedroom, 6 to 650. It's almost double that, you get to Duluth. Duluth has a problem so bad, do we want that here? Their rents are so high in Duluth, if Kathy was here, she'd tell you, that when people are subsidized, they can't even rent a place, because the rent is more than what their subsidy is. We're close here, guys. I'm telling you, we're close, we can't raise them no more, we cut out a ton of people. Already, I'm working with four different people in this community, like I said, I wish Kathy was here, she'd vouch, I'm not going to give you names, but if I chose to do what I, what I'd done, I would have had to kick them out of their home, and I'm going to give you an example, because one of them, their son graduated with my daughter, and when he graduated from high school, that family that lived in that home for nine years no longer had a two-bedroom voucher, they only had a one-bedroom voucher. I either had to lower my rent or tell them to move. I like them people. My daughter's 27, and their rent has been a one-bedroom since. That's one of four people, because you want to know what? Nobody that's subsidized, very few in this community can get a home, they have to get an apartment, because there, a lot of them are too expensive, unless landlords work with it, I don't know if a lot of the other ones are. Very hard for them people to get a home. And I don't know if you guys want to subsidize housing here, it'd be horrible for our community to only have that. There are people that don't want to live in subsidized housing, for whatever their reasons are, you know, they just don't. And if it wasn't for the Wixtrums, me, there'd be none, nobody came to this community to buy a home. And I'll tell you people right now, nobody's going to come and invest and back us unless there's free money, because if you put an income statement, you're going to see there's no money, as I'm about to show you, as my, my, my payment was 225, my taxes on that is $55 a month, my insurance is 90 a month, and I put only $50 for upkeep. And with that, I make $130 a month. If a washing machine goes out, there are six months of my, my profit where I make zero. If a furnace goes out, we're talking years. If you guys come over, because I've already been told and tell me to fix my parking lot, we could be talking months where I make no, who would want to invest in this community under that circumstances? Guys, you're making it hard on us. You need to work with landlords in our community. Now, with that being said, I'm going to tell you right now, most of our landlords, I think, are good ones. And why do I say that? I see them working like me. I see Glennies and Wixtrums and spending, there are some bad ones. And I'll tell you what, what's going on in our country right now, I feel bad for our chief of police. My best friend has been, was sheriff in Beltrami County for 27 years, my nephew is a state trooper in North Dakota. Those people are being hammered by our country for a few bad cops. Let's deal with those few bad cops and the few landlords, and leave our good police officers, work with them and our good landlords, and let us do our job. I don't know what you're asking, you know, and now, getting into this, because it really, really does upset me, and what upsets me is the people that are trying to use my money. And I can honestly tell you that to me, right when I heard it, the first thing that comes to my mind is why the new position? Why do we need a position for $67,000? For one thing, do you guys really think that's a good time to do this? We don't know even where our country's going to be in a year, nor the loan, our state, that is horrible, and even our city, to say that we're going to spend $60,000 of somebody's money, somebody's going to have to pay for this virus, it's nobody's fault that the virus, it is China's fault, but we got a virus and it shut our country down, our grandkids are going to pay for this forever. Now, I don't know how you guys think it's going to happen, our government can call in a fee or taxes, but it's all the same, our citizens are going to have to pay for it. I think it's horrible time, and to do it to landlords. You know, I've got some things that I had to get done this summer according to HUD. Either do something with my building on Eighth Street, it's a beautiful building, but the outside isn't good, paint it or re-site it. I always really wanted to re-site it. I have people not paying me since March, since March. I have payments on those homes, and nobody said I didn't have to make a payment at the bank. The worst thing I would ever do as a business, not make that payment, because they will defer it, not interest-free, it all rolls to the end of my loan. If you guys are business people, you don't know what that would do to business people if you did that for long and just didn't make payments. I'd never get to retire, never get to retire. And I don't think you guys want that. Now, with that being said, like I said, it brings me to why do we need the new position? I mean, I, one thing is, one thing I do want to talk about too is, do you know, I read in the paper that this got shot down before, and you know, in, in a way it did, but it didn't get shot down this way. I mean, with, with the last time when it happened, when our, our past fire chief suggested that we have fees, there was no new position involved. He wasn't hiring nobody, that was his job. As a matter of fact, Kelly Myers was a little bit upset, and I remember that, because it was, some of it would have fallen onto Kelly too. I want to know why our fire chief can't do it, why he feels that he's got to spend my money, $67,000 of it, a good share for this position, that when he got hired, that's part of his job, and now he's pushing it, and not only pushing it, spending other people's money to do it, which I will tell you, maybe I'm wrong, you guys can comment, I think there's nepotism involved in it. Who are these four candidates? Has this position been in the paper? Because I did not see it. And when we got a position like that, don't we want the best? Don't you want, I mean...
Before you go any farther on that, I'm going to make a comment, there was no nepotism, that we used the civil service rules, it could only be posted in-house first, so only the firefighters that were currently hired as firefighters could apply for the position. So everybody in our, our, our fire civil service had the opportunity to apply for that job. It is not a job that we could apply outside of the city or outside of the current employees.
You can't do that?
We cannot do that according...
Can't hire a fire marshal for another community?
We cannot. It is in the rules and the fire civil service rules of the city of International Falls.
Well, then I'm sorry, but I could tell you, I hope you see how it might look that way, because, and I'm not the only one that feels that, trust me, there's been a lot of talk about this, that's why, that's part of the reason I'm here. But I will tell you, at the point to where my money's being used, and, and, and any time, I think there should be a microscope that's over that. Didn't you guys ask our fire chief why he can't do that job no more? You realize our community has shrunk, don't you? When I graduated, I couldn't get numbers back to 1985, but in 1990, there was 8,000 something people in our community, now there's 5,900, about a third less. Why is it that now, that our past fire, they all did this, now we need a $67,000 during this pandemic to take care of this?
I'm going to ask a question then of the fire chief. Chief Manasa, is the fire marshal position something that we have actually done and went and did the, the monthly, or the annual inspections of rental properties on our hotels? Hood, Hood, is that something that we have actually done in the past? Because I don't believe it is.
We have not, other than complaint-driven or purpose, you know, reason for inspection. So the articulated schedule that we're talking about, we have not done in the past. I would comment that part of the fire chief's responsibility is also ambulance director. So since 2010, we basically tripled our number of business in the ambulance side, increased our employees by six full-time employees, so that the jobs have increased in different areas as well.
Thank you.
We've also taken on hazmat role, which we did not have before, so there's all kinds of added duties that are not being discussed.
Well, we'll discuss some of them. When this happened, at the prior time that this happened, and, and our, our past fire chief brought this up, I will tell you guys, I was the one that came up here, I organized it. Things went on that I didn't like, the way they were done, I came to the meeting, it didn't pass through, but from that meeting, a group was formed. Of course, I was part of that, me, Cindy Jacksaw, there were a couple other landlords and a couple renters that were on that group. Now, in the meantime, our mayor was doing things in our city council with HUD. And do you guys know, and I didn't have it, I truly thought that Kathy would be here today, and I asked Ken to send me a link for Zoom, but I didn't get it, and I didn't call her back because I knew she was busy. Did you know that at that point in time, that our city entered into an agreement, a signed agreement with HUD? Did you guys know that? And what that agreement said is because there was, Kelly was upset of all these, and there's going to be, HUD agreed to do inspections. And Kathy told me this morning that a year and a half ago, our fire chief stopped coinciding with her. There's 150-plus inspections that she had to send that weren't even dealt with. Is this a real important issue? This is an agreement our city had with, with HUD, a signed agreement. I'll get you guys a copy. Like I said, I just, I truly thought Kathy might show tonight, that she didn't call me back, because she's going to be here, but she had family issues.
So are you telling me that HUD does, let me ask, you're asking us questions, I'd like to ask you a question. So are you telling me right now that HUD has been doing all of the inspections for all the rentals in our community?
No, I'm telling you that I don't know exactly what the agreement is. Harley, you need to find out what it is, because it's your agreement that you have with HUD. The way Kathy had explained to me was that they were going to do a bunch of them too, and they were, her, her inspections were going to be sent to you, that we inspected this unit, and it's all going to be done, and nobody needs to be charged, they got to do them anyways. And it went on for quite a while, she said.
But did they only do that for the HUD? Did they only do them for HUD?
They are.
Okay, okay.
Correct. Those are all housing.
Chief Manasa, you have something to add to that?
The agreement was HUD did five, what they called 5% inspections, so that equaled about 150 inspections a year that HUD did, we did five a year for HUD as an audit process to make sure that they were doing their inspections correctly. That agreement was renewed yearly in the first, first or second council meeting of the year. My knowledge, that agreement was not renewed in 2020, I don't know why. I know the year before that, for 2019, the five inspections I received, that I had to do was contact the rental people to get into the units to do the inspection. And I think it was something, this is off the top of my head, three out of the five, I could never get a hold of a set of times to get into it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeSenza is correct, you're right, for the last year and a half, we have not done the five inspections that we were assigned to do.
Kathy told me currently she had about 150. She does, she...
She does have 150, we had five.
Okay, but, but she can get you guys whatever you needed, is basically what I'm saying. And she's willing to work, she wanted to come today.
Mr. DeSenza, I, if you could wrap up, I appreciate you've been speaking for 45 minutes at this point, and I, I would like to discuss the housing crisis and why we have, why we're looking at the position of fire marshal, so I will answer those questions, but I'd like you to finish up.
Okay. Well, I don't know where to figure, basically what I'm asking, there are people that want money from me, and they do, and I'm going to tell you right now, I don't know. I think there should be a time audit done on our city, at how people are spending their time. I want to say one other thing, our past fire chief did a lot, a lot, I don't know what this one did, so I'm not going to say he's done nothing, he might want to defend himself. Our past one got a lot of grants, a lot of stuff that it didn't cost taxpayers zero, because what he's calling a fee, Harley, what you're saying, you don't want to raise taxes, you know that's what you're doing to us, don't you? Call it a fee, call it a tax, you're taking my money. That's what you're doing. I don't agree with that at all. You know, but I also don't agree when I go to that fire hall and I see people sitting around. And I'm telling you, I challenge you guys to go there. I've seen it many, many, many times. And I think there needs to be a time audit. If you're going to use my money for that job, I think you need to justify it to me. And you're going to have a hard time doing it when this job's been here forever. And we've got a shrinking community and HUD working to, willing to work with us. And now, in this time, a $67,000 a year job. Because I suggest that it's done by taxpayer money. But you don't have to raise taxes to do it. You just need to take it from the people that already are being paid from their taxes. Some of the people that want to take my money, I think you need to take it from them. Anybody appointed, I'm sorry back there, Rich, I know you had nothing to do with it. But I think you need to take from anybody that's paid with taxpayer money and use their money. Not just, you realize we're all middle-class people. Glennies, Wickstremes, Lepre, every name I mentioned, we're middle-class people that work hard. Don't take from us, that's what I ask you. Please reconsider this before you spend our money. I'm asking the council to reconsider.
Well, first of all, I want to tell you that we have found that there's some problems with the fire marshal position as well. We've sent it back down to committee level where we're having discussions. We had, we've had a couple of discussions through both HR and through, I believe it was the committee of the whole, maybe not. But we've had discussions about how it doesn't make sense and it's not a one-size-fits-all model. We can't look at having a fee that goes to the one-bedroom rentals and make that the same as what we have for apartments. So we have seen that there is a flaw in how we're trying to put some of it together. The reason that we're looking at doing a fire marshal position actually comes down to exactly what you've discussed, which is the housing crisis that we have in our community. We, I don't think that you're a slumlord. I don't think that you're a bad landlord. I don't think that any of the ones that we have in our community are.
There are some.
Fair, fair enough. But what the concerns that we have is, we know that we don't have wonderful housing stock. We understand that we have people that come into our community and they are not able to get the middle-level house that they need to rent that is not HUD-supported or just pay for that. What we're looking for is to make sure that if there is a fee that's handed down to you as a landlord, we're not stupid. You actually have business owners that do sit on this board. And we understand that it's just a, it's going to have to be a pass-through of some sort. So when you, as the landlord, get, let's say it's a $120 fee, it's going to be pushed at $10 a month to all of your renters. The way I look at that is $10 a month to know that my house that I'm renting for my landlord has heat, electricity, water, things are working, and it is safe as a one-time, once-a-year inspection to make sure, which, again, we have not done that as the past. The reason that we're looking at this as our city council right now is to make sure that our renters have quality homes moving forward into our, we know that there's a housing crisis.
Can I ask you, Harley, what do you consider a quality home? Because I'm going to tell you something, I work very hard. My house payment is $1,400 a month, 1,400 a month. And I'm going to tell you why it's that. Because to build my business up, I literally mortgaged it three times to do that. What should, what should people get? I challenge you to come to any of my rentals. What should they get for 400? Brand-new everything?
No.
Brand-new, you know?
No, absolutely not.
Because you bankrupt us. You'll make no rentals in the community.
I have no expectation that everything has to be new. I have no expectation that everything has to be painted every time you go in. My concern is that you have running water, that it has, it has a furnace that works, that the electricity is not compromised in some way in which you could have a fire.
There's a fire alarm.
There's a fire alarm, a smoke detector.
This was all discussed last time when we had our group. Because I'll be honest with you, it came out that it was all about safety, but I felt it wasn't. It's like this just is not all about safety. And like I said, it got pushed out back. Not that it got pushed. It got where you weren't charging people for it. Like I said, you council really need to help us so we can provide housing, not make it harder. I'm telling you, you guys got to go and just put it on paper. It would be foolish for anybody to come to this community and buy a house, one month empty on a high-end house. You won't make money for the rest of the year. And here's what happens on those high-end homes, because I know where they come. I just had a customs officer that moved out of my home on First Avenue West. I've got another one that lives on 10th Street. They do what he did. He was from Arizona, but he came here and he didn't know if he was going to like it here. So he rented. And he's lucky he found my house, because he did not want an apartment. He's got a beautiful car and a Jeep, and he wanted a garage to put it in. He liked it here. Guess what he did this summer? Bought a house. And that's what will happen with these high-end homes. It's why people didn't invest. Not that I didn't look at it. To be honest with you, when I started this, I got a business degree. I purposely strategically took on where I felt that if I cater towards lower and lower and middle-income people, that I'll be able to keep my units fuller. They're not going to leave. They're going to stay. I'll get some good ones. They'll stay. And I've caught some that have been with me for 15-plus years, you know? And that was just a strategic move. Because when I put these nice houses on paper, I had one. I bought a house on Riverview, but I bought it with several other things. And I was in the process of fixing it. And I could tell you guys right now, that would have never went into my rental stuff because I would have had too much money into it and it would have never cash flowed. I was flipping it. But in halfway through it, somebody came in there and said, hey, what are you doing in here? You're working on it. And I lived, me and Troy Lepper were in there putting in cupboards. And we literally stopped that day and he made me an offer and I sold it. Because they're not worth it. That's why I'm trying to say, instead of hindering us, you really need to help us. And if there are bad landlords, which I'm telling you there are, deal with them.
How do we deal with them if we don't have access to get inside the house by doing a permit?
Well, I'll tell you, you do, you do have some access. Throughout that last thing, you know, there were several things that really came up in that meeting. And I don't think any of you guys were there. And actually, Dan Griffith was asked to come in as attorney that day. During that time, there was a case in Minnesota that went to, it already had gone to the Supreme Court. It was in the city of Stillwater. Because what the city of Stillwater did is they did the same thing. They enacted where they could go and inspect. And the renters had trouble with that. Because I can tell you guys right now, if you come to my home and you knock on my door and you say, hey, we're going to come in here and we're going to make sure that your water works and your fire extingu, your fire, I'm going to tell you to get off my property now. And whether you agree or not, a lot of the renters feel the exact same way. They don't want you in there. Why do you think they're not answering? When Adam said that?
Well, and the problem is, is if they don't, if they don't answer the door, then you don't have a certificate of occupancy for the rental.
This was dealt with. So let me finish telling you. So what happened is the city of Stillwater enacted it. And now that went to the Supreme Court and the Supreme, I don't know what happened because this all went away. Maybe you could ask Steve Schimone, he might be able to tell you. What happened is the Supreme Court sent it back down, this is in Minnesota, to the lower court in Minnesota and said, listen here, those renters got as much rights as you who owns a home. That is their home. You know, which brings me up, because I did want to talk about blight. Do you guys think you're helping our community with blight by picking on landlords? I'm going to tell you, I talked with this with Jerry. Wrong approach. Not that we don't need to know. Most of us landlords are trying to deal with them too. Right now, I can't even get people out. They could throw anything they want in my yard, I can't even evict them. Those people are going to go from whoever's property right to the next property in our same community and do the same thing. Because you want to know what they know? Nothing's going to happen to them. It's going to go on the landlord. Is that really solving the problem? Now, I know at the end of it, it probably has got to go on our taxes. I mean, but I don't even know that that has to be. Why can't the city do like HUD does? If people owe HUD money, you want to know what HUD does? They go to range collections, just like I send people to. Now, that's a little different when you're talking taxpayers' money. I don't know. That's things you guys got to talk about and how you'd want to. But I'm telling you, going after us landlord, I feel picked on. I don't think that's the right way. I mean, I got an uncle who's got a trailer court. And you want to know those people in that trailer court own those trailers? He don't own them. They have to pay taxes on those trailers. But if Larry don't clean it up, he's already gotten many bills. And I'm telling you, a part of it, why he didn't do it, he's fighting for his life with cancer. He'll probably die soon, to be totally honest with you. I hate to say that. Larry, I hope you're not listening, fight. He's dying. And they're on him. And my thing is, there are some issues that need to be taken care of. Half of them are these people that own these trailers. You want to know what happens to them? Zero. They should at least face the wrath of the court. Something of our city to say, we don't accept that here. We don't accept you to do that to landlords that rented you that property, and we're not going to let you get away with it. But we don't get backup like that. All we get is courts in the city that you just want a stronger stock at our cost. That's how I feel, Harley. That's how it made me feel when I read that. Now, I'm sitting here facing you guys, and I hope that you're listening to me today. I'm not just talking to me. And I can tell you right now, had I had more time, I would have filled this courthouse like I did the last time. It was filled in here. And just to let you know, when I left, people clapped. Keep in mind about this city council, and I'm not saying you guys, because you're new, but you've probably heard it in other community. I know as far as the older people that I know you have, people in our community think that you hinder businesses. A lot of them think Boise is the reason. They got power, they don't want to give up the workforce. I never believed that. And I question that today. Because I sat here in a city council meeting where that big Menards was on the line over a liquor license. And I still don't understand why you wouldn't give, our city council would not give a liquor license to county market that sells food, liquor, food, hand-in-hand liquor, gas, what they allowed before that, hand-in-hand. And I don't know if you guys know, but Menards flew their attorney here in a plane and the second-hand man from Menards along with county market. And if our city council did not give them that license, and I'm telling you, you guys got to pull that, I'm telling you, they wouldn't have done it. The 4.8 million they were spending locally, the 22 jobs that were coming here from the big Menards, which ended up being over 30, was all on the table. Two councilors still voted no. Thank goodness for Cindy Jacksaw, who emailed me the next day thanking me for getting up and giving a different side that she didn't see. I hope you guys can see a different side today. That taking money from landlords ain't the right way to do it, especially now. You really need to work with us so that we can get stock. Like I said, there ain't a single person that bought a home except your local homegrown people that chose to come back here and invest in your community. Help us, don't hurt us. That's what I'm asking you to do today. And by doing that, and like I said, I think there needs to be an audit done over there. We got a shrinking community. Do you know that under our fire chief, we got four full-time RNs now? That cost our community probably a quarter-plus million dollars.
Four RNs.
Is that what we got?
We don't have any.
I thought, I thought I read in the paper, we got full-time RNs now.
No, we have zero for, we have no RNs.
All right, well, then I'm sorry, I'm missing on that. Please be careful if you're spending our money, especially mine. That is what I'm saying. It's coming out of my pocket, that's why I'm asking that it's, that it be done, that you do diligence and make sure that this is the way. Because I got other ways that you could raise the money. Did you guys think of other ways? I truly think you should institute a renter fee or tax. And what I mean by that is that as a landlord, for every rental that I have, just like a hotel that's got to pay a hospitality fee or tax, that we have to do that. But I'm going to tell you, I don't want to be the one to raise my renters' rent. Because that's what is going to happen here. You guys are taking from the poor. All us landlords aren't just going to eat that and along with the 6% of $21,436 that I got to pay because of our airport. And I don't even want to get into that. I'm not against our airport, but we had an airport. I don't use that airport. And most of the people that you're asking to pay 6% plus whatever they paid last year and the year before, they don't use it either. That airport is for wealthy people, and you're asking your lower and middle-income people and me to pay for that too. 6%. That came out to $1,286 of my taxes, besides whatever else you guys want to charge me. And I didn't even figure what you're charging, because I know that that's just this year. That airport costed us more. I'm not against it, but we had an airport here. We had one that people could fly in in a jet. It was just a small jet. Now, I guess the wealthy can come in a big jet at our expense, people.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is a mayoral proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that proclamation.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the resolution approving the delinquent water and sewer accounts to be certified on the county audit and treasurer. The total this year is $1,471.25. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that resolution. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion, please.
I just wanted to bring up that, because earlier we were talking about the landlord ordinance.
Can you get the microphone so you can be heard?
So as we were talking about the ordinance that was enacted in December of 2018, requiring landlords to keep water bills in their name going forward, I just wanted to bring up some statistics, because this was the first good year that we got a good kind of idea whether that was truly working in terms of, because a big part of it was the assessments that we were in, kind of incurring. And this year, as you can see, there were only six properties totaling $1,300 in principal. In 2019, we had 38 properties totaling $8,462.87 in principal. And in 2018, we had 28 properties totaling $9,823.66. So the trend has significantly trended downward in addition to everything we're seeing, obviously. It's definitely worked in our favor, and we've seen, seen the benefits of that in addition to, obviously, the benefits we've looked at in past months in terms of shut-offs when we're in normal, normal shut-off cycles.
Since you brought it up, I just want to have a quick, and I know that you don't have exact numbers, but rough guesstimate, how much did we pay for just certified mail for sending out in the past on delinquent water accounts?
Yeah, so in the past, I did do some research last year when I went to, we did training in, for our, with our civic symposium, and reached out to some other communities to see what other communities were doing in terms of certification of mail. Because in the past, we were always certifying our mail. It was costing upwards of $7 per letter. And we were sending over 100 letters, because we were having to send one to the landlord as well as one to the renter, if there was a renter, otherwise one to just the homeowner. So we were spending upwards of usually $800, sometimes more, just on the certification of letters, which we weren't seeing a recoup on, because we don't charge any kind of interest until it's become assessed, as you can see on this certification. So we were significantly losing in terms of the assessment process with certifications. Because we did such a good job in terms of changing the way we do things, as well as kind of just putting that much more effort into finding people, we saw a significant tread downward in terms of letters overall. We only had 15 properties that we actually had to send out letters to at the beginning of August, six of which obviously have been assessed today. So we did see nine, nine take care of those. care of those. So we only ended up sending out 25 letters total, and we did not certify them this year, because we found out that no other communities really do that. That was kind of a, a unique to the city of International Falls, that we were always trying to kind of have proof that we, we did our due diligence, and we think that we, you know, we were with, you know, recouping on nine of the 15, we did a pretty good job. And we kind of knew going in that these ones weren't gonna be recouped on, that we were gonna assess in the end anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, sure. I'd just like to say for one thing, she got statistics, but not only say how many of those were rentals and how many were private. We don't know that, because she's still getting something private.
How, how many roughly, what is the?
This group?
Not of this group, but in the past.
In the past, in the past, we were seeing at least a third to a half were rentals at least, which is why going into the 2018 change with the rental ordinances, we came with those statistics showing how much of our time was being utilized on rental properties.
And again, I would just like to say, you do it for private, I am a taxpayer, as again, a $21,000 tax, and I shouldn't, and I want to prove that to you. And I don't think you've done with that number, say, I mean, I don't know why that would be, you do it for itself, but you don't do it for, you do it not for landlords. Like I said, I feel that there's been a lot done that's been against us, and this is wonderful.
Thank you.
Why would you do it?
I understand, and that was a point that you did make earlier today when you were up there, up here, about talking about water bills. And one of the things that, that we, we had to make this decision, and the reason we made this decision to put that in the water, or the landlords, because ultimately, you have to pay it at the end of the year anyways, but it, it cuts all of that taxpayer money, as you just pointed out, you're a taxpayer, it cuts out all that taxpayer money of trying to send it out to other, it, it does go out to everybody.
No, it don't, it bill everybody else. I don't even know how to do it, I gotta, you know.
We bill every property owner in the city of International Falls.
Taxpayers, but not other taxpayers.
We, we bill every homeowner in the city of International Falls. It is the same across the board, we bill every homeowner in the city of International Falls.
Again, you understand that when they rent my homes, it's their homes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the approving the delinquent grass and blight invoices to be certified to the county auditor and treasurer. Um, let's see, I have that one right here. And the total on this one is $29,939.22. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the delinquent grass and blight invoices.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion?
Why did it sound, why had it sound like?
It's, it's how, how much we charge the people for not cleaning up their blight, and we had someone clean up the blight on their behalf. And, and their lawn mowing, and these are invoices that were not paid.
The city, uh, cuts the rest of the, you know.
We have, we have a, we have a proper, someone do the, on our behalf. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution declaring equipment from the Public Works Department as surplus, and authorizing the sale of such. Chair would entertain a motion for that, to do an online auction on do bid.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the application for demolition for the two manufactured homes that we had put off, we had tabled to a meet, a subsequent meeting. They are before us. City administrator, you wanna give us some background on this?
Very briefly, Mayor, the two properties are at 2105 and 2107 Third Avenue West. The property owner had assumed these from a different family member, and the renters have left them both properties in poor condition. So we had, in the past, had sent some letters and requests for cleanup of the properties, and as part of those discussions and that interaction, the property owner had requested a demolition application so that the city could remove the properties, and our current demolition policy, building demolition policy requires that for non-home-stated property, it requires city council approval. It was referred to the Legislation and Land Use Committee where there was a discussion, and the suggestion is that both of these units be rejected for the city undertaking the building demolition, and that the property owner be encouraged to have private contractors do the work rather than the city.
Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion to deny or reject. I also would accept a motion to move forward with the demolition. It is the choice of the council, but the recommendation from staff and the land use and legislation would be to deny and reject.
We'll make such a motion to deny and reject.
Okay, we have a motion to deny and reject from Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion?
Mayor, I, I do know that the property owner, she had called me today and had asked for some suggestions about private contractors that could do this work. I said I would get back to her. She said that she may try and attend the meeting and change her schedule. I'm not sure if she's on Zoom, so maybe you could just give her an opportunity to speak if she happens to be on.
I don't believe she is.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to reject. Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have the 2020 High Falls Rec Hockey Preparative Plan. Masks are to be worn by all people while in all areas, according to the governor's order. This is, um, this has been given out to all of the families, information on how to act, how to utilize the facility. Chair would entertain a motion to move forward with the Rec Hockey Preparative Plan.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Have you sitting over there?
5-0, motion passes. Next, we have approved the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Woodworkers Lodge W-33. I am, I am a W-union for the firefighter engineer, work schedule being changed. This was in addition to our, our packet today. Ken, do you wanna just give us some background on this?
Yep, very briefly, Mayor, the fire chief and I had an opportunity to meet with Joe Schwartz and the union steward for the firefighter engineers just this morning, and we had a conversation about trying to alter the schedule that the firefighter engineers are working because of the absence of one of the employees from the work schedule, and so there was agreement by the parties present. I drafted this memorandum of understanding. Mr. Schwartz is here representing the union, it's Local Woodworkers 33. So we essentially are changing the schedule from four on and four off, 12-hour shifts, to five on and three off for 12-hour shifts, only on a temporary basis from now until the end of the calendar year, which is when the current union contract is scheduled to expire. So we're asking for council approval and to execute this, so we can put this in place. And there's actually agreement, we would be starting here in the, where it shows month one at the top, and the schedule in blue is where we're at right now, and that's where we would start today and as early as tomorrow, so.
Okay, and, and the reason that we put this new schedule together was because of overtime issues that we're having right now?
Well, it's to spread the work, you know, we normally only have four full-time engineers, we have one of them that can't work right now, so there's three of them that are picking up the load, and they try and even out the workload and distribute it evenly among all three employees, and have a routine schedule for doing it. We're recommending this particular schedule, which, which again, changes it from a four-on, four-off to a five-on, three-off, but everybody will work the same schedule, and then if there's any anomalies or shifts that have to be filled, you can see that there's a few of them where we have to use a spare engineer, and we have a couple that can fill those. And we also allow an opportunity for the most senior engineers to have first call on whether or not they wanna take those shifts, so it kinda depends on what their personal situation is and their availability, so the contract does specify we need to do that as well.
All right, so chair would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All second.
Second by Councilor Deech. Discussion? First, I, on this one, I wanna thank Councilor Briggs and Chief Manasa, when we had a HR meeting this first came up, and we had to get, speak with the union, make sure that we could do this, so that we could get fair work schedules for everybody. I wanna thank Joe Schwartz for, um, representing the union and being able to make this work for both our employees and the city, so I, I do appreciate that, and this is just temporary, until we can get our employee back and get moving again. So thank you guys for all the hard work to get to where we're at tonight. So with that being said, there's no other discussion, the chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Any other business to come before the council? All right, then we'll go to the reports of boards, committees, department heads. Report of the administrator.
Well, Mayor, there's just a couple things. I received a notice today from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, in anticipation of the work that's gonna happen in the summer of 2021, they are having a virtual public meeting on October 14th, and that will be held at 5 o'clock. And essentially, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss with the property owners that are gonna be affected, marking of the new driveway locations as part of the Highway 53 reconstruction project. So they kinda wanna get on the front end of that, make sure that the public is very familiar with what's being changed, if anything, so they're going along the whole corridor to be worked on next year, marking driveways, and then giving people an opportunity to ask questions and find out what's being proposed and why. And so that's coming up on October 14th at 5, and that's available on the MinDOT website to tie into the link for that. There's a project for the city of International Falls, and people just need to go there. I did wanna update the council regarding that project for the week of October 5th to the 9th. They're gonna be finishing up sidewalks, doing lighting work and signal work at 17th Street, and then bituminous paving this week, and that will be between 15th Street to 17th Street for the full width of construction. And then they're also working from 17th Street to 20th Street, doing some aggregate surfacing, some driveway paving, curb and gutter installation, as well as sidewalks, and then they're gonna continue with some retaining wall work that they've started, and, and some lighting work. So that's what they've got scheduled here for the next week, and I anticipate that they will be done with the paving work on or about October 15th, because that's a MinDOT regulation, just given the weather, that they, they really don't do more after that. But just wanted to give you that update. Third thing, as you all know already, the mill outage is in process, and they're planning on having contractors and doing that work through the 16th, which is a week from Friday. And in the interim, or during this period, we have allowed contractor parking on both sides of Second Street just during the mill outage. So we've coordinated with staff from PCA and the police department in that regard, and I did send an email to you later last week in that regard. And then just a reminder for the public, as well as for you all, that there is a candidate forum tomorrow night for the local races, it's at, I'm sorry, on, on the 7th, when, on the 7th at 6:30 PM, and that'll be at back, 'cause some people can monitor that live on KCC TV as, as well as the radio stations. So it's on October 7th at 6:30.
All right, thank you. City Attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, with regard to the blight cases, we haven't initiated any additional criminal cases since the last meeting. I was out of town most of last week for medical appointments. We did have five cases where we had court appearances on the 22nd of September. All of those entered not guilty pleas, and they're set for pre-trial, and all of them thought they had made progress and improved their properties, but I had Chief Manasa inspect them all, and he reported back to me that none of them were in total compliance with the statute, so we're continuing to work with those, but the circumstances are basically just what they were two weeks ago at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Department heads, anybody have anything to bring forward? You've received the blight report in your packet, also the, um, information from the fire chief and the housing inspector of the blight report there. Reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. I, I did talk with Councilor Briggs regarding the last airport meeting and part of our financing and stuff. Could you just kinda share that, what we have to do as a city to try to get some of this financing stuff taken care of?
City administrator's gonna have to work with the airport secretary to find out, basically, if they're gonna be able to use that money or not. It's, it's still up in the air, the rules change all the time, so.
About that million.
They're just gonna have to stay in constant contact to find out on each individual item whether it's gonna be covered or not.
Right. And, and we are, we're banking that we're gonna be able to utilize some of that money for operations, but we have to make sure that we, we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is, yeah, dotted, that's what I was looking for, so.
I mean, even S C H, the engineers, you know, who work with a lot of people, they're, they're still not sure. It's, it's an individual case-by-case deal.
So, any other reports, council committees, boards? I, I did speak with the Public Works Director regarding our local road projects. I think we're all pretty knowledgeable that we expected them to be done at this point. The same date that, that the city administrator had discussed is October 15th. All of our local projects should be done by October 15th, and if not, there is a, a fee to be assessed to the contractor of $500 a day in the event that they don't meet the deadline, so we have that, that going forward. And the other thing that I, I just wanted to bring attention to, because it was probably one of the weirdest things that I've seen people be angry about recently, is the signs that the city put up about the 1% sales tax, and why we have those signs up. I believe we have five, maybe seven signs that we put, and it says, "This, this project has been funded by your 1% sales and use tax." Those signs are gonna get reused on every project, but we want people to see that we're using their money the way it was intended. There was a lot of concern when we, we started this sales and use tax, that we were not gonna use it for the proper things, which we have to use it for the proper things, but there was concern it was gonna go to the airport, there was concern that it was gonna go to other projects in the city. 100% of that money is going towards our roads, sewer, and water, and I, we're putting up signs to show the, the residents, that's what we're doing with your money. And we've been able to get a lot of that project done this year, we have another ambitious project scheduled next year. So those signs, those are just a reminder of what we're doing and why we, we have that tax coming in, which, another thing I wanna point out to the residents, even through COVID, we are still at, on pay, on track to get the $850,000 in taxes to do the roads and stuff. We are, I am just as shocked as everyone else, but the, the taxes have still came in, we are still right on pace, so we are gonna continue to be able to do these projects moving forward, so just wanted to talk a little bit about that. I have nothing else, so if there's anybody from the audience that would like to discuss something, now is your time.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I just put up a building, and my contractor had told me that he had talked to somebody from the city water department, that they would extend sewer, so I have access to sewer. And I thought that was very nice, I spent training classes, and I got a bill for $400, somewhere around $400 the other day, and I was just under the impression... $400, somewhere around $400 the other day. Now it's just under the impression that that extension was gonna be surviving by the city, putting up this new building for the Treado Lake Corporation, I think, Treado Lake.
No.
I didn't know. Yeah, I, I don't know if this is the place to carry off or not, but yeah.
I would, I would, if I were you, I would talk to Kelly or, or, but no, extending for a new, a new build. I mean, it's a service we provide, but we still have to charge for it. So. All right. We have nothing else. We did receive correspondence from the Visitors and Convention Bureau and the International Falls Cooch and County Airport Commission Agenda and Minutes from September 30th. Our next regular city council meeting is on Monday, October 19th, 2020, at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.